Okay, we will call this meeting of the commission to order. And the first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible) of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next will be public comments. And commission request the comments be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person. And Mr. Trey Morgan is on the list.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Trey Morgan. I'm the current owner at thirteen seventeen South Spring Valley Road with the failing septic. Really, I'm just here, I want to know what we're going to do with the sewer and what's going to go on, if we're going to get a sewer or if not, because there's a couple of different options I ran into with being in the city limits, there's a big difference between your septics. Now, being in the city limits, my septic system's going to cost me seventeen thousand dollars. If I was in the county, it's going to be six thousand dollars. So, really, what I want to know is if you guys are going to bring us this sewer, how long it's going to take? Also, I want to know, is there going to be a tap-on fee, which I don't think it's fair for other people on Spring Valley Road, if you bring us this sewer, to make them tap on within so many years? I know that there's people out there that probably just replaced their lateral lines a year ago. So, that's kind of no fair for them to, what I want to say, tap on within a year's time or two years' time. And also, I mean, unless you guys want to de-annex us, another option I have is I'll put in my septic system. That's fine. But I don't want to see us, two, three, four years down the road, get annexed back into the city for special tax, taxes, or district improvements, or things like that. So...
Now, David, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong. The limitation of a septic system in the city, is there, there's a square footage, correct? Forty thousand, ninety thousand is the special system? I'm going to call it special.
It used to be at ninety thousand, we locked it down.
To forty thousand, right?
But, and I don't remember what the, the actual, this number off the tape in my head is, but the, the standard that was adopted was basically to say, if you're not going to hook onto the public sewer system, to go to what the county calls the enhanced system, which is also required in the county depending upon the soil analysis.
And above ninety thousand?
It's allowed down to one thou, to one acre.
So, it's...
It's not an upper limit, it's the lower limit.
So, anything in the city must be enhanced? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'd have to reread the ordinance.
Okay.
Generally, under the current standards from most places that we've dealt with on-site systems before, it's had to be the enhanced system because the soils were such that it would not take the traditional septic system.
Okay. And you have two acres, two and a half acres?
Two acres.
Two acres?
Two acres.
So, ninety thousand square feet, roughly?
Yep.
Okay.
And then I know they also base it on how many bedrooms are with lateral feet that you have to have for your septic system, so...
Right. Okay. Well, I think there's further discussion later on, and, and absolutely appreciate you giving your thoughts on it, but we, we will further discuss it. And at that time, if you have something else you would like to say, we'll afford you that time to do so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No other? Okay. Next will be the consent agenda. The three, the three items that were the exact same and on the same date, did you get your question answered?
I didn't. I was going to say, everything that I asked about, they gave me the answer that I needed to hear.
Okay.
There was one question I had, I think it's still, it's not in the consent agenda. It's, I missed a question? It was, uh, page forty-six. Was there an RFQ for the contracted work at the police department?
Yes, yes, there was.
There was?
Uh, the RFQ for the police work on the lobby.
Your question?
The request for qualifications or, or proposals.
I didn't get the other two. Unless they came in later.
The copy of what, what Shawna gave you.
Yeah, I just felt bad that I missed one though. That's okay. I don't like to. And then I asked the question, were there two Marstons? Because I know there's one with the police department, I thought there was.
Where, uh, what?
Eighteen nineteen, there was a...
There was one.
Oh, I missed those, that's my bad.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a Marston in Public Works.
Public Works, I think.
And there's one with the JCPD, because I was saying it.
Yes, there are two Marstons.
There are all PD, and I think there's one with Public Works.
Yes, I know there's one in Public Works. I don't remember.
Okay. I thought it was the, the wrong department reporting, but we have two of them.
No, there is, there's one in Public Works, I know that one.
Okay.
And she knows the one in police, so...
I didn't go far enough down, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, it's not. I think I deleted a bunch of it off of there, so I was good.
Okay.
Thank you, I have no further questions. Great.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under new business, consideration of ordinance number G dash one-one-nine-six, amendment to section two-two-zero-point-four-zero-five, possession of marijuana. Krista?
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Dinkle, Commissioners. Krista Blaisel, City Prosecutor. Before you tonight is an amended version of the possession of marijuana statute or ordinance for the city. Recently, this last legislative session, the state lowered the first and second offense convictions for possession of marijuana. Previously, a first conviction of possession of marijuana was a class A misdemeanor, and a second conviction, second or subsequent conviction was a felony. They recently reduced that to a first conviction being a class B misdemeanor, second conviction a class A misdemeanor, then a third offense and subsequent being a felony conviction. That went into effect July first. I apologize that I am behind the eight ball on getting that before you as well. This change just reflects, basing, making us in line with state law and in our penalty phases with that. The difference between a B and an A misdemeanor, a B is punishable by up to six months in the local jail, and up to a fifteen hundred dollar fine, and A is, or, sorry, a thousand dollar fine, and A is punishable by up to a twenty-five hundred dollar fine and up to one year in the county jail. The city's, it's my recommendation that the, that the commission adopt this proposed amended ordinance, thank you. And I'm open to any questions.
Yes, I do have one question. When I was reading this, I was thinking about residents only, but then I just sat here and I thought about, what about the folks on the highway that pass through our community?
As far as, how do they?
If they're carrying drugs and we stop them, and this is their first offense, but they're carrying a bunch.
(coughs)
Is this for personal use only?
This, uh, this would be just what the state, what we coin as simple possession. So, if somebody was charged with, like, possession with the intent to sell, so, and that, again, is all dependent upon the facts of each case independently. So, whether it's quantity, packaging, different types, it is very factually dependent on how it's charged. There's not, for the simple possession, there's not a specific weight, like, up to X pounds, but it's more of a totality of the circumstances surrounding that.
Wow, that's a lot. Okay, thank you. I didn't think about that until I was sitting here, now I gotta think, what about the folks on the highway? Okay.
The misdemeanors make it more than you prosecute on the misdemeanors, right?
I'm sorry?
You prosecute on the misdemeanors, and then felony goes to district court?
Oh, in the city limits, correct.
We end up prosecuting more on this in locally.
Yes, we would, yes, this will increase my caseload as far as marijuana drug cases through municipal court, yes.
Mo money, mo money, mo money. (laughing)
Four hours, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Make a, I can make a motion.
Yeah. Move to approve ordinance G eleven-nine-six.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Roll call?
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mayor McAllister?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Landis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be consideration to award the police department lobby remodel bid to Godfrey Construction and Renovation in the amount of sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. Mr. Dinkle.
I'm going to go ahead and ask Chief Precy since he yelled it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I come before you tonight to, for consideration approval of a request for bid for the remodel of the police department lobby. I request for bid for the remodel. Police department was released by Dean &amp; Dean LLC in, on June sixteenth, two thousand sixteen. Contractors were not direct solits for the project. However, Dean &amp; Dean did contract, contact local contractors after being concerned about the number of bidders for the project. They are as follows: Hellstep Construction, Andrews Construction, Ben Kitchens Construction, and Godfrey's Construction and Renovation. The RFP was advertised on the City of Junction City website and in the daily union, as per the City of Junction City fiscal policy, with a bid opening date of July twelfth, two thousand sixteen, at two PM. The RFP also was posted on a website called Dodge Dayton Analytics by Dean &amp; Dean Architecture. On July twelfth, two thousand sixteen, at two PM, bids were opened at City Hall. Two bids were received. One was from Godfrey's Construction for sixty-four thousand, eight-eighteen, and the other was from Cheney Construction for sixty-four thousand, six hundred. The police department received these two bids. However, there was kind of a problem. In the, the pre-bid contract, they had to come to the pre-bid meeting, and that meeting was on Mon, Monday, June twenty-seventh, Godfrey and Ben, Ben Kitchens showed up, as per the specifications. They put out another, since they were the only two, they put out another time for a walkthrough, and that was on July sixth, and no one else showed up, including Cheney Construction. The bid, we felt, given the above, police department staff is recommending the bid for the remodel of the police department lobby be awarded to Godfrey Construction and Renovation LLC at the price of sixty-four thousand, eight-eighteen. In Cheney's bid, they also put a seventy-five day time limit, and Godfrey's had a sixty days or less. We computed that in the bid contract as two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day past what Godfrey's was, roughly a little over three-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars that we would, it would cost them additionally if they went that pri, that long. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and...
A completion date requirement?
There was, uh, no completion date requirement in the bid. It just said that, it mentioned that, that any time limits, I'm not sure the, the exact how it stated, but...
Ellen's got it.
I got it here. I pulled, because Ellen just got this question. Don't see one in there. Did both bidders have their five percent or bid bond?
I don't know, I'd have to pull the...
Did both bidders submit money when they bid?
You would have to, they went through Dean &amp; Dean, so if they asked for the specs and everything, they went through Dean &amp; Dean.
So, did Brett?
Would have had to, yes.
Looks like they did.
Okay, he did then, okay. Oh, they got it, okay, she says it there, okay. No, in the, Captain, or Chief Precy said, one of the instructions to the bidders is pre-bid meeting shall be at two PM Friday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, proposed building site, all bidding general contractors shall be in attendance.
And all of them were not? Is that what I'm hearing?
Of these two, no, they weren't.
Okay.
There was two there, but according to Chief Precy...
I believe there might, there was a, a little hitch on that, because Friday, the twenty-seventh, is really on a Monday, and so...
Oh.
They actually did the meeting, the two bidders that did show up, Godfrey and Ben Kitchens showed up on Monday, June twenty-seventh. Because of that, Dean &amp; Dean put it back out, and put it back on Dodge, and they had another pre-bid meeting or walkthrough on July sixth. And at that time, Cheney did not show up.
Godfrey was the only one that showed up?
No one showed up, because Godfrey had already met the requirements on the twenty-seventh, from what...
He did, he did do a walkthrough on the twenty-seventh.
Walk, yes.
Okay.
If you'll recall, on our demolition project for the municipal court, we had a similar situation where one contractor did not show up, and so we, we threw out his bid, because he didn't show up to the pre-bid conference. So, it's not unusual for us to do that.
So, in light of that information, was Cheney Construction non-responsive?
Yes.
In accordance with the bid documents? So, why did we accept a bid of sixty-four thousand, six hundred dollars?
At the time of the bid opening, I wasn't aware of who had attended and who had not.
Okay. Okay.
It was in the totality of the review that all of this was discovered.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other option you do have, according to city purchase policy, you can award the bid to Godfrey at sixty-four-six, because it's less than...
Within three percent of the...
This is less than...
If it's within three percent, you, you can go back to the other bidder and say, can you match the bid? And if they say yes, then you accept that bid.
But you wouldn't have to do that, I mean, you have enough to go on here, I believe, that you can accept at sixty-four, eight-eighteen if you want.
Yeah.
Katie, your opinion?
Um, I think you can accept the, the higher bid here, under these circumstances.
Okay.
And his, he gives sixty days or less for completion?
He has bid sixty days or less, and Cheney Construction was fifteen days longer, I heard you say?
Yes.
Yeah.
At three thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar estimated.
I guess that's how they calculated on Dean &amp; Dean stating that since it was fifteen days longer, and in the contract it said two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day.
Is that Earth days or Jupiter days?
Now, don't, don't go there.
That was Cheney, he said seventy-four.
So, this, we have, we have a sixty-day bid and a seventy-five-day bid, and a difference of two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, which meets the three percent. However, we also have a non-responsive...
Bidder.
Bidder by not meeting the requirements of the bid documents.
Well, and also, I would add that, in this case, you, you, two things. One, you reserve the right to reject any and all bids. You reserve that right.
That's in the documents.
And, secondly, it's the lowest responsible bidder, and one of these bidders you have had difficulty with.
But we want to be, make, we want to make sure that we are within the legal latitude...
And you are.
Go with a local bidder, as opposed to a bidder that was non-responsive.
I believe you are.
Okay. Very good.
Do we have any idea why we didn't get more bids? Is it just that everybody's busy, or just doesn't want the project, or?
I think it's everybody's busy, and I was kind of surprised only two showed up the first time, and I was surprised that Ben Kitchens didn't submit a proposal.
I guess, not be a stick in the mud, but should we push this to a winter project when guys aren't as busy? Because it's an indoor, indoor project. Just a thought, to get more bids. I don't know. It's probably too late in the game now, and you guys gone to all these gyrations.
You can turn all down.
Reject all bids.
You can reject all bids.
On the other side is, you'll add more cost to, to Dean &amp; Dean.
And...
And are you going to save, if he charges...
Is it worth the savings?
Yeah.
He charged another two thousand, are you worth the savings?
It might be a thought in the future to kind of think about those things a little bit, as far as, guys are typically super busy in the summer, and this isn't a, you know, hurry, hurry project.
I think we started this project, I would actually guess, four or five months ago. We have several other projects involved, and we're still waiting on this whole process to get going.
Okay. There were no pictures of what the improvements are going to look like, right?
Well, I have, uh...
You have a sketch, don't you?
I have one.
This is being paid at asset forfeiture.
Okay.
The tiles on the floor in the bathrooms will be new, the walls will pretty much be redone. We're going to add a door, and so when you come in our lobby, we'll have one door on the east side of the, the glass window, and one on the west side for dispatchers and records clerks to go through. Everything on the west wall that's there now will be taken out, and it'll be, it will look professional. When they walk in the front door, it'll be the JCPD logo with our, same as our patch on the floor, and I think it's something that we'll definitely be proud of when it's all done.
I'd move to approve the award of bid to Godfrey Construction as described.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Are we doing it at the amount of sixty-four-six?
Six, as presented, sixty-four, eight-one-eight, Godfrey's bid price.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next will be consideration of case number FP dash zero-six dash oh-one dash one-six, the request of Cal Valley Engineering Agent on behalf of JC Logistics.
Mayor Commissioners, Davey, Applying Zoning Director, this is a plat, and essentially it's a replat of property that is owned primarily by JC Logistics. As I noted in the staff report, there is a strip, sliver of land that is actually owned by the city, that's occupied by the rail spur that goes on to what I was, has been led to believe at one time was the warehouse owned by the foundry. Long history behind that. Bottom line is, the intent here is to replat the property. The reason for the replat is because of a land swap that is going on between JC Logistics and Penny Concrete on the property that Penny occupies down there. They own part of that land. They're making a, a transaction between the, the two of them. This plat will result in a legal description actually defining those lots. This is beneficial, and it also resolves some issues with multiple old easements that were across all the plats that were out there, and it's all cleaned up by this new plat. We had considered the fact that we might try to get the issue resolved with the rail land that the city owns beforehand. The conclusion was to just move forward with the creation of the plat. The hope and intention is ultimately to bring the issue of perhaps having the city give the land or transact the land to JC Logistics. Apparently, they do maintain it presently, and it would also then, by doing that, get it back on the tax rolls. The land is encumbered by the easement for the rail spur, and as I understand it, the railroad owns the spur. The only issue that we had during the plating process that delayed this from the time the planning commission heard it, was the question regarding the, the electric substation that sits at the northeast corner of the JC Logistics property. According to county's ownership records in the appraiser's office, they identify that as being owned by Westar. It was subsequently determined that, that Westar's interest on it is only by means of an easement. The land is actually owned by, in this case, JC Logistics. Apparently, the reason it's parcelled out separately is for tax purposes only, but it, it is, and it was subsequently confirmed by communications from Cal Valley to Westar that, no, they only have easement rights on it. And yes, they do pay taxes on their substation, so... Planning commission has unanimously recommended approval of this, subject to us resolving all these issues which I've discussed here briefly. Comes with you with the recommendation for action to approve. Under the statutes, what you do is, is prove and accept, and in approving the plat, you're accepting all dedications that are shown on the face of the plat. Even the motion is simply to authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute the plat. I do think Mr., Representative from Cal Valley do have that, Mr. Osburn has that with us tonight, but we'll, we'll chase those signatures down as need be. So, happy to answer any of the questions you may have.
I don't have any questions.
I have a question.
Pretty simple, just resurveying, making it straight, right?
Pardon me?
Pretty simple, just resurveying, making the areas straight.
Well, it's actually creating lots that then will match what the two parties between Penny's Concrete and JC Logistics have agreed to convey to one another.
Okay. And it'll be back on the tax rolls?
Uh, the strip of land that's, the railroad tracks in time will be back on the tax rolls. That's the objective.
Okay. Thank you.
I move to approve the final plat for the JC Logistics addition to the City of Junction City as presented.
Second.
Over there.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
None here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consideration to award the equipment lease purchase agreement bid to US Bank in the amount of three-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars, with the interest rate being one-point-six-zero. Cheryl?
Nice. The consideration of lease purchase agreement this year was for three-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars and sixty-one cents. We, as you see, they just rounded, they rounded it up. But, for one-point-six interest was the low bid, it was from US Bancorp. We solicited twenty-eight direct solicitations to local, as well as air banks that had previously expressed interest in lease purchase program from the city, and we published it twice, and was on the city website. So, there were plenty of opportunities for them to participate in the process. As you can see, we had one, two, three, four, five banks participate in it with several options. The lowest award at one-point-six percent interest is an annual payment with a lease purchase buyback option, which we never do. So, because it carries the lowest interest rate, that is what we were interested in, and suggests that we accept their sample agreement pending approval of the city attorney, because she's got a couple of things that'll need to be changed on that, and once they work that out, then, then you're giving us authority to sign that lease purchase agreement that was provided by US Bancorp. So, they were very good bids, all the way through there. Very competitive.
The ambulance defibrillators, does that come out of the fire reserve?
No. Because it's not fire equipment, it's ambulance equipment.
The fire reserve is a fund that's set by state statute.
Okay.
There is no...
This will be paid back out of, beginning twenty-eighteen, first payment in twenty-eight, purchased in twenty-sixteen, first payment in twenty-seventeen. So, these prices, I thought we weren't going to get lower than what we did last year, and then this is excellent.
Yeah. I would move to approve the award of bid of lease purchase agreement with US Bancorp as recommended by staff.
And...
Should I?
Yeah.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Just a little, so these rates, I know it's not dealing with this particularly, but some of our bonds that we have, their interest rate of five, can we refinance, possibly?
You will, at the next, um, next item on the agenda will be the first resolution that we're going to be going out for a bond refinancing.
Okay.
And for forty, almost forty-eight million.
That's what I read.
Okay. Thank you. No further.
That's the next item on the agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And the next will be consideration of resolution number R twenty-eight-eleven, refinancing of the general obligation bonds, series twenty-sixteen A and twenty-sixteen B.
Okay, the resolution, as you, as presented, will show you that on bond DP, DQ, DU, and DR are the callable amounts of those, of those bonds. This is not the totality of each bond, it is only what is callable, and that adds up to almost forty-eight million. That will be, you're authorizing us to go out for bid. On the August second meeting, we will have the bid quotes to you, and then at that time is when you would lock in for the refinancing of those bonds, and then we proceed forward... and then we proceed forward to refinance. But at this time, you're only authorizing us to go out for bid for the callable portions of those bonds. So with approval of the resolution, that is what you are doing.
So we're refinancing at center call?
Yeah, they'll refine something out. Seventeen million on bond DP, one point nine million on DQ. DU is twenty million eight hundred. DR is six million seven hundred and fifty thousand. The balance remaining will not be, they'll still remain in those bond series numbers. They're not callable at this point.
Okay. Now, that's a good question.
Yeah, we, for the last three years, have gone out for what is, for anything that we could find that's callable so we can get the interest rates down.
Most bonds will have a three-year, five-year, seven-year before you can call them. It depends on how they were set up and interest rates and all the variables.
We should see, this should be very beneficial if it holds for another month. And right now, the most competitive market right now is the city bonds across the United States. So we're in a very competitive market for those types of bonds right now. So we hope to see a nice return on this.
Good thing we've improved our rating.
Yes.
That's pretty important.
Yes, S and P doesn't see a problem. They're definitely not going to downgrade us. I doubt they'll upgrade us either. But he was very pleasant with us on Monday and was very comfortable with what we're doing.
That's why we need to keep building reserves.
Yes.
Even if we bump the mill just a tad up.
Yeah, if we could go to a triple A, that'd be sweet.
Made me heavy.
Well, another fifty million down, we might do that, but.
Anyway, so this is a very good thing. Now, I mean, it's too early to tell, but we think we're looking in a million and a half to one point nine maybe. Savings overall.
How much, a million to how much?
A million and a half to a million nine. So what you think we might hit. But we'll know all that on August second. So on August seventh, we'll have that report and Columbia Capital will be here to report to you what they have received in bids and everything. So it's all set for this to go out for bid.
Okay.
We say it tongue-in-cheek once in a while, but usually everybody always says refinance your bonds. Well, first of all, they have to be callable. And secondly, sometimes the admin costs are too expensive. Since we have so much, the admin fees really don't increase that much more. So it gives you affordability to do it. And even if somebody says, well, and grant, there's going to be admin fees. You're going to see those in the documents next time. But when you still have a million dollar savings over a period, over a ten to fifteen-year period.
No brainer.
Yeah.
See, last year, we only, we only refinanced five, five point six million. And now we have a bunch that's callable and we could see a significant saving.
We had a return of like five or six hundred thousand dollars, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
What we put into the streets and whatever.
Yeah. This one will go just straight to savings. It's going to be significant, which is good.
It's the work that she's been doing on that with Jeff that has helped us to keep the mill at the same. I mean, it's all the trickle effect and, pardon Cheryl for that.
Now, now this, this, and you will, I can't reflect those savings in this year's budget because it's, the actual sale of the bonds is not until September fifth, which is after you've approved the budget. So we won't know the reflection of any of this until the following year's budget.
Okay. Another piece of the puzzle that, keep getting it put in the air.
Fiscally responsible efforts. Thank you.
I make a motion to move to adopt resolution number twenty-eight eleven, authorizing the offering, the sale of general obligation bond series twenty sixteen A and twenty sixteen B as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
None here.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next consideration, the agreement with KDOT for the twenty-seventeen Clink project.
Mayor and Commissioners, it's been in the process far as application for last year moving forward to now. This will be for the agreement with the state for Clink. This will be from Washington Street from sixth to fourteenth. Why this year's different than the rest, we don't know. But it's a good thing is that the KDOT's share goes up to three hundred thousand dollar max rather than two hundred thousand. This is the only year I think I know of. And don't know why, but.
We'll take it.
Don't worry about it. This will just start the process and we'll get into the queue as far as getting a bid for next year. So, but and then next year, we'll have from around about all the way up to Fourteenth Street in Washington. That's a little bit of Franklin.
And Golden Bell.
Well, Golden Bell's not Clink though.
Right, but I mean, that whole stretch will be, will be new.
Plus other streets. This is a good balance of funds.
Okay. Any further comment?
Nope.
I'm moved to approve the twenty-seventeen Clink resurancing agreement as described.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item will be discussed additional options regarding the Spring Valley Road sewer extensions.
Mr. Mayor, fiscal commissioners, staff. I'm Sergio Ramos, Opera University. We have come up with an additional option, option E. Option E, does everyone have the copies? Option E, total cost with the south cost.
They have the cost, but not the.
We don't have any copies.
No, drawing.
A drawing, okay. The drawing is going to basically encompass option B, C, and D.
B, C, and D.
All right, this is between eight and eleven plots, depending on how, how the properties are plotted at the west side. And thanks to Mr. Osborne who provided us all the information.
I was trying to figure it out. B, C.
Do you have a copy of that?
That was D.
All right, don't think so.
I just put in the new estimate.
I didn't see the estimate either.
I think that was my suggestion.
What page was the cost on? Because I don't remember seeing it.
Oh, look, it is, we're good.
We're good.
What page was the cost on? Oh.
Yeah, well, I had this cadence.
Yeah. We didn't, what was?
So the idea on that, this option is to go, have the line on the west side of the road, correct?
Correct, and down. Well, we're down from west down to the bottom.
Right.
It's going to take off, option A.
So the cost will be a little bit less because you don't have to cut through the driveway.
Hundred twenty-eight, nine forty, correct.
This is the old one. It's actually, the line's going to be over here. This is the option that he's talking about moving over here instead of down here. It's over here on the side.
I like that option.
I see the price, it wasn't in here.
We didn't have that, we had this cadence.
We didn't get that. Service more properties on the other side of the road.
Two fifty-six.
And it's less money.
Was it mine?
Like seven thousand less.
I miss it.
The only one that won't be included would be option, option A.
Two fifty-six?
There's no drawing.
No, it's not there.
Is it from a previous meeting?
No, it's this meeting's.
It's not in here.
It's not in here, Ellen.
What is it? It's in mine though.
Yeah, it's in mine too.
Well, it needs to be in.
Oh, okay.
Those of us that are still paperless.
It's further down, that's why. Two fifty-six.
We didn't have a drawing available. Leanne, given this at a meeting and just another option as far as. And this is how much cheaper than the other options, Sergio?
That's six thousand.
Six thousand.
Yeah.
Six, give or take.
Yeah. Find it?
So again, this is between eight and eleven.
That's all I had.
Plots.
My notes had.
Does not include option A.
Does not include option A, does it?
B, C, D.
It was just for the one house.
It was for one house.
Right.
A goes, A is included in this.
It is.
No.
Well, it serves that house anyway.
Yeah, but, yeah. But E takes care of A.
Right.
Elevation wise, do we have any?
This takes care of that.
We're going to make, we're going to make road cuts through. This option here is going to take road cuts across Spring Valley Road?
Yes, for service lines.
For service lines.
Service lines. We don't get into all the fences, all the driveways. We can position those service lines to wherever. Then we've got a small section of fence or maybe no driveway. Just got to pinpoint where their lateral fields are.
Okay, and elevations?
Elevation, we're lower. So from what I've looked in the field, we ought to be able to serve the lots on the lower side that aren't plotted yet where Gessis has got his shed and the elderly lady. And we may be able to get into that one house. I think Gail Sonova used to live there, but I don't know where his septic tank is. Theoretically, he's easier to go to the west. That's where the sewer main is now with the other addition, which would then be extended to serve up to Richard Ross's house.
It's actually eleven thousand eight hundred dollars cheaper than the other option, being on the east side of the street.
And doing it this way, instead of the pieces the way I had it estimated before, I said, okay, we're just going to do this section. We've got a survey design. Do this section, survey design, put it out to bid. We've combined it all in one. So there's a big savings there in engineering and in advertisement.
Mobilization.
Same manholes, same number of manholes?
I'd be honest, I can't remember.
A little more.
Yeah, it's got six as many as on here. Six standard manholes.
Six manholes.
Six manholes on this option.
And which one, B or C?
Probably the same.
It would run three.
On this line.
Five.
Six. Same, same number of manholes. And we may be able to stretch that out once we get the fieldwork completed.
And go down to five, you mean?
That's all.
Yeah, that's possible.
It is possible.
These have to shoot under the street or?
These would have.
Because you only put them at your starting feet.
These would have to cross the street.
Depends on the city's equipment and what they can maintain.
And manholes are the same.
Road or route or route.
Yeah, four to five hundred is the max.
Instead of doing these driveway cuts.
Yeah.
The fence line that's, that's, there's two fence lines here.
Eleven, seven, change difference.
And go through that fence line, driveway cut. It would eliminate one, two, three, four.
Who's the consultant that came up with this idea?
Uh, driveway cuts.
And we don't have to obtain easements. We don't have to be ten foot away from that water line on the east side.
Good.
I think we can crowd it all in Spring Valley Road right away. We have forty feet there.
I liked that idea from the beginning.
That water line's thirty-three feet off the road.
To the east.
To the west.
Well, there's, there is a city main on the east side.
On the east side, there is.
And your line is thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three west of, thirty-three feet west of the road is the district water line.
Okay, well, we were looking at about twenty-five. Somewhere to keep it along that slope.
Okay.
But not crowd the right of way line. So we should be all right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
They would have to make road cuts.
And we, I've budgeted in Flauburn Field. It's someday, Spring Valley Road's going to have to be.
Yeah.
It's going to be reconstructed anyway.
It's going to have to be at some point.
Falling apart now.
Most important road in this community is, is the street in front of your house.
Yes.
Your house or my house?
Yeah.
A house.
I just made the comment.
Who said that?
Some farm guy out of Western Kansas or something. Okay, so you said it was eleven thousand dollars cheaper?
Eleven, change.
Eleven thousand eight hundred something.
The question is, why do you want to do a move forward? I mean, you know, I think you see the stuff that the city attorney wrote. I'm still, you know, you can argue that we don't have to do it. I'm not going to argue that. I still believe the city needs to do the right thing. And the right thing is a promise was made by the city.
Agreed.
What's the mistakes made? I'm not going to argue that a lot.
It's a handshake.
But we gained a lot of trust in the community. We do what we said we're going to do.
Exactly.
The question would be is, and I think, you know, in discussions I've had with numerous is, is, you know, do you give them a one-year period to hook on? Do you give a five-year period to hook on? Some will argue the five's a good number because, you know, everybody thought it'd be there in five years. You know, do you start billing them? I mean, I think there's just all kinds of issues. And that's probably the only, I think, loose factor out there yet. And, you know, because I think, you know, I feel it should be done by the city. So the question would be is, is in one year, two years, five years, you know, pick a number. I'll let you guys pick that.
Mr. Morgan, did you have further conversation about this issue that you would like to? First of all, do you understand what option E is?
Yeah, it's running the sewer down the west side of the road, correct?
Right, yes, yes.
Now, will we have to bore under the road or you guys are going to pay up the road there?
No, we, and that estimate, I have the service lines going to your property line across the road. So you have to run from there on the road to that connection point. Otherwise, the sewer wouldn't be to your property line without the city putting it.
And you would, and you would work with the homeowners as far as?
Yes, we'd have to look, see where their lateral fields are to make it the most economical and closest one.
This doesn't make a big difference if we put it here or here. But to them, it does.
So you would just stub that until, and mark it until they connect?
I would put a clean out or something at the end of it so it's easy to find.
Okay.
Simple. Any further?
Timeline, I mean, I'm having to pump my septic system every two weeks. Two fifty to three hundred dollars every two weeks. Timeline's the biggest thing.
It'd probably take thirty, forty-five days to get plans through KD eighteen. We can be bidding along that lines. Thirty days to bid it. Probably another sixty days to get it constructed. It's going to be fairly straightforward construction, but again, we're also going to have trouble getting contractors to bid on it. As you know, our last few projects, we have met a lot of bidders because of the workload in Manhattan and surrounding communities.
And this is an eight-inch main?
Sure, it has to be an eight-inch if it's going to be city-owned.
Fixer units, it's not a ten? Have you run units on it?
No, eight inches will carry a lot of sewer. A lot of sewer.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be ten.
Everything from well up right on Miller Drive clear down to the trunk line is eight inches.
Okay.
We collect a lot of lines. inch. We collect a lot of lines. And we'll go through the numbers, but fifteen houses is not an issue.
That's very few homes. It shouldn't be an issue.
No, capacity will be.
Um, okay. Time frame.
November.
November, it looks like. Mr. Morgan, are you, what, what is your immediate plans? Are you?
Well, I'm kind of up in the air right now. It's kind of on what you guys decide. Whether you de-annex us and put us back in the county, I can start on my septic system tomorrow. But my biggest thing is, five years down the road, I don't want us getting annexed back into the city for specials of taxes or anything else after I just put this septic system in and making us, say you bring that sewer down five years from now and annexed back into the city, I don't wanna have to tap on within two years' time, five years' time. I wanna tap on when my system fails after spending that much money. Cause now, if we don't get de-annexed and you guys say, well, we're not gonna do the sewer, but we're gonna leave you in the city, my option is my septic system, seventeen thousand dollars. I'm gonna have to put that in. I can't wait no longer. So I don't want you guys to run the sewer down two years and say you have a year to tap on. I just spent seventeen thousand dollars on a septic system. So why am I gonna have to pay now a plumber to run that all the way back down to the, where you guys tap in at? That's my biggest issue.
You, you've been pumping for close to two months now?
I think two, two and a half.
And is it feasible?
Not really. I mean.
Stretch out another four?
I mean, I can do it.
I'm, I'm looking at the dollars. I'm, I'm looking at five thousand dollars versus seventeen thousand dollars.
I mean, by the time I, if I were to do the math, I mean, I've already paid close for a county septic system, depending on soils and everything else. My bid was sixty-five hundred dollars for my septic system if I was annexed back in the county. So I mean, wait another four months, I mean, I could. I mean, I'd rather see the city maybe pick up that bill or have their pump truck pump it. Cause I mean, I pump an average of two weeks. I have two kids that are young, two years old and six years old, that use the restroom quite often. And I'm also trying, trying to teach them the manners of flushing the toilet, which when they gotta go, they gotta go. So sometimes I'm pumping a week.
Close enough.
Yeah, grandma's not close enough.
Um, well, I understand that. And, and as you look at, as you look at the, the numbers and you do the math on that, the cost savings to you is to hook onto a city-supplied service.
Mm-huh.
There would be a cost savings to do that. You do have the pumping for approximately four, four and a half months.
Yeah, again, we could run that, have the contractor do that main in his service line first and test that section.
Yep.
Yeah, that's true.
A lot further go north. We got a lot of service lines. So we could phase this project. We're contracted, get it up to here, you put his clean out in, or his service line in and cross the road.
That's true.
Just to make sure it meets specs.
Good point.
And let him hook up to it.
Yeah, that's true.
Might be able to shave that down.
Are you gonna have to reverse that? Are you gonna have to reverse engineer from point of entry to the northbound? Or, or are you gonna go north-south?
No, we'll come from the west down that West Star power line where the manhole is, run it straight west-east.
That'll be your first.
That, and then we'll turn it and go north and then stop where he can get into it.
Okay.
Then let the contractor finish going up through, since it's on to the north.
Yeah, then, then you'd have thirty, forty-five days most.
Right.
After you get a bid.
We can stage our contract that way and give the contractors extra days after we get him serviced.
That's only three more pumpings.
That'll help on bid.
Three more rooms to do.
There's some options.
I mean, the slogan, should this be like, should this be two separate motions, one to approve doing the system, then a separate motion to say when people have to hook on?
Yes, I think it should be. And if you, if you read, after our last meeting, I went back and kind of went, you know, I don't know if you've read the memo I sent, but you'd have to amend your code to require them to hook on before their systems fail.
Right.
Because you.
To require.
To require them.
They could petition to the city to hook on.
Well, I, I think the city would permit them to hook on.
Absolutely.
Soon.
Right.
But to require them, you'd have to amend the code. So those should be two different.
We'll do one thing tonight.
Why don't we take care of the system first?
Initial, yeah.
Let's go ahead and do that.
Get the contract rolling.
If that's what you choose to do and then amend.
And, and funds for this are gonna be your reserve and sewer.
Waste water.
And wastewater. That's why we have reserves. And, uh.
Is that why?
That's one of the reasons.
Just one of these instances.
When things go south. Remember that.
This one's south.
Yeah.
Right down the drain.
Before it goes down the drain. Yeah. Try to make a better point.
We've got two actions here. And, and the first action is whether we decide that it's in the best interest of the city and, and the constituents in that area to put in a sewer line as indicated the city would do ten years ago. The, the next piece of it is how to take care of the failed septic system. So that's a separate issue.
No, not take care of the failed system. It's, is.
When they hook on.
It's requiring a hook on.
Yeah. Require when they fail or require sooner.
Okay.
But we have a whole code to address, not just Spring Valley.
Right.
Okay.
Right, it's, it's a whole code issue. Or an amendment to the code.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're looking for a, a motion for option E.
To, to authorize, um, moving forward with, with our engineer in the process.
Spring Valley sewer extension, option E.
Mm-huh. And these are costs, I mean, they're approximate, of course, as you know that, but.
Right.
Best you got today.
So moves.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Sergio, thank you for doing the legwork for me.
Thank you.
For us.
Well done. Thanks, Sergio.
And he'll be giving the class present, when he?
I didn't, okay, wow.
He'll do a class presentation next month?
Next month, correct.
So he can graduate.
Yay.
Great. Go, Sergio. Let me know when. I got a job for you in about eighteen months.
There you go.
So are we gonna talk about the other part now?
Well, you have to draft an ordinance, you said. So you're gonna have to give.
I mean, you could give us direction if you want.
Give them direction.
Right.
But how would that affect the other people in town? I mean, would this affect other people that are near a sewer line now? I mean, that's my question.
Cause I thought we were only discussing this with regard to the annexation agreement that they had to tie on instead of the whole code for everybody.
But we also have McFarland Road.
But we haven't extended that line.
That's why I'm saying, but, but this was part of the annexation agreement.
Right, of those fifty-seven properties, right.
Right, right, right.
But it doesn't affect McFarland Road because we haven't extended the line.
Yeah, they have no option.
Yeah.
We have not extended, this is talking about a line that, that goes next to their property and they have so much time to, to, to hook on.
So the, the ordinance, just to refresh everybody's memory, the, the ordinance before the McFarland Road provision was drafted back in 2013, just basically said the city can require people to hook, you know, who aren't on sewers to hook on. And there weren't any grandfathers or anything like that. And with McFarland Road, the, the compromise, I guess you'd call, only related to, it, it said that, um, owners, owners along Spring Valley Road who had existing onsite systems as of September first, 2013, I didn't say Spring Valley Road, but owners within the city would not, you couldn't require them to hook in until their systems failed. I mean, you had McFarland Road in mind at that time, I think.
Yes, that's when it came up.
That's how, that's the context it came up on.
Yeah, we had no failed systems. It was about putting new properties and sewer for them.
And we had this concept of they would all be examined within five years and, you know, a determination would be made.
So why would we do anything if we already have an ordinance?
Um, if the ordinance is not changed or something isn't changed under your existing law, there wasn't anything, I mean, we don't have a, we didn't have many specifics in the annexation.
No, it was, it's a.
It was pretty.
It basically said.
The plan was pretty vague.
It was a vague plan.
It was a vague plan. So there was nothing specific in the plan itself. I didn't bring that again tonight. But there was nothing specific in the plan itself that said, it said the city would extend the sewers, but it didn't say, you know, when people would have to hook in. So the failsafe to that would be the, the old statute. But since we had, we changed the old statute after that happened to say that if people had existing systems, uh, in, by, on September first, 2013, then we can't make them hook, hook in until those systems fail.
The only thing that we had was the minutes that Mr. Barnes had said that they had five years to.
That was his comment.
That was a comment. That was a comment.
It's not, it's not an approved vote or anything.
It's never part of a motion or an ordinance. It was simply his comment in public comment session.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I mean.
Yeah, that's the only place I ever read anything about.
Yeah, and I don't know where that came from because it's not, unless the city code, code was different then.
I don't think you change the ordinance. I don't think you need to amend the ordinance. I believe what you're talking about here, the ordinance covers, we have a failed system and as soon as that sewer comes in, in three, four months, somebody's gonna hook to it.
Right.
And so the next person that, that is in line or, and, and you don't have to wait till you fail.
No. But the question was if you can require people to hook on sooner than their systems fail.
Right.
That's the question.
And, and to change that, it would take an amendment. And what I'm saying is, there's really no need for an amendment. You already have people that as soon as a sewer line is in that area, they're gonna hook on to. I think, I think anybody that knows anything about the systems knows at some point it's going to fail. And also, every five years, it's two hundred and seventy-five dollars to have it pumped out. So I think in, in the long run, it's, it's a cost savings. Once there is a, a line stubbed to your property, I, I can't, I can't believe anybody wouldn't hook to it.
Well, it's not a cost savings to the city if they're chugging out a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to wait for, you know, one to sixty years before the system fails.
Well, wouldn't you consider a system failure as lateral line or tank? It doesn't matter which. It's a failure. So you put notice to the san, public sanitaryian, then once she's had notice at a failure, then she's gonna advise them, well, then you have to connect to the city sewer because you have one next to your property.
If they're given notice.
Yes.
There's a lot of handy folks out there. They're gonna take care of their own stuff.
Isn't it, isn't required inspection in, in the old ordinance? In, in the new ordinance, it requires it every five years. I remember talking about that when we did it. It's gotta be inspected. So I mean, at some point, it's gonna be picked up.
And that, that applies to all onsite systems within the city. They're supposed to be inspected.
Um.
So here's, here's where, let me explain it once again. Before this was amended in 2013, if you extended sewer to a property that had an onsite system, whether the onsite system was working or not, you could make them hook up to it.
Right.
That's the way it used to be. And in 2013, it was amended to say, to basically grandfather all systems in existence as of September first, 2013, which I assume picks up all of these on, on this road, I'm assuming.
Yes.
I'm assuming it does.
It does.
Then, um, you can't make, it, that basically trumps the other statute and, and you can't force them to hook up until their system fails. That's, that's the change you made in 2013. And that apply, that, that applies to everybody in the city. They were in the city, these systems were there. So if you were going to decide that as a condition or in addition to extending this sewer, you wanted to have the ability to require people to hook up sooner than their systems failed, you'd have to amend this statute. That's all I'm saying. Or this ordinance.
Right.
Cause this ordinance applies to everybody in the city.
Yeah, I asked, why have we changed the ordinance in thirteen?
That's what, I tried to give you some background.
Okay, so, so Mr. Alexander was developing a lot on McFarland Road. And he owns several lots, but he was gonna develop one.
Right.
There was no sanitary sewer along McFarland Road in that stretch.
Right.
And there were houses with onsite syst.
And there was, yeah, multiple houses.
Everybody's had onsite. And one person just put a system in like a few years before that and paid a lot of money. So if we would have done that, forced everyone to come on, even the person that spent many, many, many thousand dollars, much more than the gentleman that spoke of tonight.
I think it was twenty, twenty thousand she paid, approximately.
Quite a, quite a firestorm on her hands to do that.
Well, and in connection with that amendment, and David's here, and he, I think he wrote the statute, you also changed the requirements for onsite systems.
He adopted the county sanitation code.
Yeah. So it was not just this section. There were other changes that, that changed the requirements.
We still have houses on the south side of McFarland that are not on city sewers.
Correct.
There's no sewer there.
Correct.
And, and on the north side also.
Yeah, but I know the one.
And the, and the costs were significant to run to both areas.
To, to put it in there.
More so than this, much more so.
Pressure systems instead of just a.
Wasn't it three hundred plus?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it was, it was a lot.
It was a lot.
It was more than this.
And this is probably not fair to ask, Dave, what's the difference between a city or county's sanitary system as far as?
There isn't. There isn't.
Cause I mean, we're, I'm not doubting Mr. Morgan at all.
I think he's asking the system, the enhanced system versus just a septic.
Well, but in the county, if your soil, there's a, a process that's gone through.
Is it based on, is it based on the amount of land you have?
Land and soil type.
In, in the county, and, and I think our, our regulations are a lot of the same thing. We allow even less than an acre of ground, you can put an onsite system in. The county has, you could do that. Process that's gone through is that, uh, the standard is that if you're less than three acres in size, then you're required to have the enhanced system. The entire design of that is predicated upon the soils.
Okay.
And other site conditions that are, that are done by the county's sanitaryian. And that's determined then what kind of system you go in. And costs for those systems, depending on who you talk to, have ranged anywhere from ten thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars, what I've heard. So it's all across the board. It depends on the condition on the individual lot. And you can go three hundred feet and you get a whole different set of soil conditions. So.
And if that one resident hadn't just spent that much money to put in a system, we probably would have said, no, everybody's coming on. We would have done it. But that was kind of the stumbling block we had.
And actually, as I, as I look at this, it says, I, now I'm looking at it more closely. It says, so for the grandfathered people, which are Spring Valley Road, but it's, I'm sure it's others in the city as well. Um, if the system fails, then in this, uh, code section, they're really given the option of either, um, installing, um, hooking on to the city or installing a private onsite wastewater treatment system conforming to the standards established herein, which were higher than the existing standards, I believe. I believe, weren't they?
Yep.
So we, so it actually did more than just say they don't have to hook on until the system fails. They were actually given the option.
And that's, we gave her the option.
And just to make, so we're on the right, same page here. On the Spring Valley Road one, as the annexation agreement said.
It wasn't an agreement.
Agreement, but the.
Plan.
Plan, and, and plan, excuse me, plan. Um, the homeowner will pay the normal connect fee.
Yes.
That was part of that document as well.
Right.
Make sure we, okay.
And that was five hundred and fifty?
I think it is.
Well, the term used was hookup fee. And there is no hookup fee. There's a tap fee.
Tap fee.
That's in the ordinance that deals with hooking into the sanitary sewer, but there is no hookup fee. That's another one of the terms that was used in that plan that left more to the imagination than clarity.
But they're interchangeable from city to city. Tap fee, hookup fee, it's the same thing.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah.
It's the same thing.
But isn't it true that where the city really gets revenue from it is, once they hook up, then you get to charge them for it?
Yes.
It's not the tap fee, it's the.
No.
Usage that produces revenue.
Right. I don't think we reversed what we did in 2013. Um, I think those individuals will, will tie on as soon as, because of the circumstances and because the city is installing a main to, a, a sewer service to a property, I am of the belief that those individuals will hook on to it as soon as possible. Because of the maintenance that's required on septic systems is eliminated.
But why not just require them to come on? If it's such a good deal and they're gonna save money, why not just have them come on anyway? You just said it yourself. So what's the difference between just requiring it to?
I think, I think most folks will. But if somebody has a new system put in there, just, just as they did on McFarland, why would they wanna change? Until it, until it failed, if, if thirty-one seventeen South Spring Valley Road put in a sixteen thousand dollar system, we wouldn't require him to hook up just like we did on McFarland. Now, I think circumstances have changed because instead of six to nine months, it's only three to four months. I think those circumstances have changed.
Impossible to be shorter for him. I, I will tell you, when this was done in 2013, that was done all, all under Mr. McCaffrey's management, and they have not been inspected. There, there has been no inspection of any septic tanks since, by us.
The, the county's sanitary.
Well, she, she basically had told us at the time that this isn't part of her duties. She wouldn't do this on.
Yes, she's, she works for the county and we are.
She works for the county, but I don't think.
We are.
I know, but I'm telling you, I don't think this has been done. I don't think.
It's only been three years.
Yeah. I don't think it's been done. Cause I don't think that the county sanitaryian has ever gone through and given us, or we, that we have mutually worked together to provide a list of how many septic tanks are within the city limits, and that each and tanks are within the city limits, and that each and every one of them has been inspected. I don't think that's occurred. I could be wrong.
And we may just need, we may need to get the information to them.
Yeah.
Who was the lady that brought the samples in? Was she county?
She's county.
So she's-
Mrs. Davies.
Because we don't have anybody qualified on staff to even do that.
Yes.
Why would we?
No, exactly.
The county has a person.
We don't have anybody. But I'm not aware of any inspection report or anything that this has ever even occurred, just so you're aware.
Will we be in touch with Mrs. Davies to see if that's the service she provides?
Yeah, I wrote it down here, that's something we need to check.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that brought it to mind.
In the normal course, would the county check onsite systems?
No.
They, yes, they checked my sons.
I would think they would.
I've never heard of it, but why, interesting.
Because they're in the county. I think we don't know, we need to ask.
By the county codes, it's supposed to be done every five years.
Really?
Yeah, we followed county code when we came up with that.
Okay.
Because we got it from Mrs. Davies.
That'll be interesting to find out, then.
Well, contact her.
I've never seen a report to that effect.
And when, when it comes time for Sean to have his done, the pumping company contacted Mrs. Davies and she followed him out there. And when, when they emptied the vault, then she checked.
Then she inspected it at that time, that's cool. Okay, so we just need to find out, or get a report on whether it's been done within the city. Have you had yours ever inspected by her?
Not by her.
Yeah, but by the county?
Not by the county, no.
Okay.
Private individual contractor.
And the contractors were supposed to contact her whenever they emptied one.
And, and I, I don't think they did, because I never saw anybody onsite-
Yeah.
-other than when he inspected it.
Okay.
Kind of gets back to my point of failing systems, if we don't-
Unless we know, yeah.
You don't know, you don't know. Mr. Mayor, I'm not trying to be mean, not trying to pick a fight, but, um, I didn't say anything when we were discussing, you know, running the extension to the whole area and everything, but I'm afraid you might have a little bit of conflict of interest here since you are one of the parties along that stretch. And Mrs. Logan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure that, if we have a vested interest, if we're supposed to be participating in the discussion. You, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
You could probably recuse yourself from, from this, I-
And I can do that.
And that means not voting and not in, not discussing.
From all conversation. Okay? I can do that.
But we still need to look at something we need to do for this young man and his family. We got-
We're doing it.
We're doing it.
We're long.
I mean, every two weeks, what are we doing?
Nothing.
Nothing.
You mean to report to him on status, or what do you mean?
No, every two weeks, he's, he's having his sewer or septic system sucked out. And that's an expense that he's gonna have to deal with either for four or five months or three or four months.
No.
And he's looking for resolution, that's what he said when he came up here.
Your injured judge reported to you, he thought he could do that for his property, extend it and get it within two months.
Well, we're still gonna be two months we get bit, I mean-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Meanwhile, two weeks is-
And a contractor lined up.
Two to three, then.
I'm looking at his family, two to three weeks, and if it was yesterday, he's got two weeks from, from then. If he did it two weeks ago, he's ready to put out another three, three, four hundred dollars?
Two fifty.
Two fifty. I can't afford that, even if I was working. It would get rough, I'll put it that way. Is there anything we can do to help him?
Doesn't have a pump truck, are they gonna come out and pump it out?
I really don't want to get into using the city pump truck on private property.
Mm-hmm.
For a private purpose. I, I got just a lot of issues with that, I don't, I don't know the regulatory side at all. And I'd have to check on that first, but-
But if we have guys trained or not trained to do it, and if something went wrong, then it were liable.
Right.
Then if we go back to the hook-on fee, or however we want to call it, the link to hook up, hook-on fee, that's five hundred dollars. That would cost a resident to hook onto the sewer system, he would have to pay that, correct?
But that was already in the original plan, for that they would, that they would be required to do that.
Would never have to pay that.
No.
No, that they would be required to pay that, and that was in the original petition.
That was part of that outline.
Okay, but I'm thinking right now, if we can't help him in any other way at all, we take that out, waive his hookup, if it's five hundred dollars is what it would cost him, I think we could waive that while he uses that five hundred to purge his systems. I know, it's another can of worms.
I just think you stay with the standard because, one, we're gonna keep our promise, that was made ten years ago, to put it there.
Finally.
Argues a little later, but we're gonna do that.
Right.
We're keeping our promise, and you got, and, and the commission has already approved that. And we're not, and, and that wouldn't change anything else in the, in that outline.
I guess I would want to know the, the status of sewer systems in the affected area, if a new system has been put in the last five years. I would like to know that information before we make a final decision on-
Okay.
If, if and when we would require people to tap in.
If a new system had been put in, wouldn't that have gone through the county?
Yeah.
That should've been, yes.
I'll check with Lisa.
That's what I'm saying. If, if we've got something that's pretty close, I can see, since we did that along McFarland-
Staff will make it-
I can see that, but-
Staff will make it-
I, I'm not ready to push it to a vote at this point until we know a little bit more about the affected residents.
Staff will, staff will get research on it.
Are we good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Mr. Morgan, see me after the commission meeting.
Proceed.
Yep.
Next will be selection of delegation to the AUSA annual meeting.
Annual meeting is in October, um, whatever dates I listed in the back.
The fifth to the eighth.
October 2nd to 5th.
Yeah.
During the commission week.
Yeah, we'll have to move a commission meeting, because we won't get back, Sunday through basically-
Wednesday.
Wednesday morning. You know, most of the convention, last year, we did a congressional visit on Wednesday morning. And we did the rest on Tuesday, and they went on Wednesday.
Why would we have to move a commission meeting?
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday night.
All you need is three.
No, you need four. Four for a quorum.
I'll be here.
You need four.
I'll be on vacation.
Four for a quorum and-
When would you move the commission meeting?
That's up to them.
I know, but I need to-
Yeah, I know, I know you would.
Well, I'll work with you on that.
Okay, okay.
Week four, week after, whichever.
And that may be one of those where we may just tell you, but, we, you know, I mean, unless there's something really happening too, we-
Well, the following week is league, isn't it?
Yeah, league will not conflict.
No, it doesn't.
Well, league, you're back on Monday on league.
Monday, yeah, it, it, they finish up Monday, so you're fine.
I just wondered if you would have it the following week or-
And maybe we could just have a s- as agenda gets developed, as you move in September and October, you know, like with any agenda, you can go, this can go early, this can go a little later, and you do a basically a bill paying session, a thirty minute session a day later, or whatever, you know?
We did that once before here.
We can accomplish it. That's not the issue.
Figure it out.
We just have to name how, who's gonna go, because, uh, John's gonna be contacting me soon, soon on, on getting reservations for both people, but then also airplane and everything else.
I don't have the time off, so I can't go, and so, I mean, I think the mayor and vice mayor should go if possible, if they have time.
Usually two and the manager.
Well, untold.
I'm good.
And actually, it's not on the agenda this time, but the league meeting, actually, it's not the same time this year, it's a week, no, this is a week earlier, actually.
This is a week earlier, yeah, USA is early this year.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Major?
I'll let you know. Right now, that's understood.
Oh, okay.
Okay, done with that. Committee reports. And I believe- Commissioner Landis.
Well, we had a land bank meeting tonight, and we got a couple more lots in play, and we may be getting a lot more lots here very soon, after we get the report back from Caw Valley on the south end of Mann's Ranch. These have been very disturbing times the last few weeks in our country, and, and I wore this shirt tonight for a purpose, that we need to support law enforcement every day, every hour, every week, every year. The sacrifices and the things that these men and women face every day are just beyond comprehension for most of us, and the outright slaughter that's going on right now is horrific. You see an officer around, thank him. Thank him for everything they do every day. We, we wouldn't have a society without them. So keep in your thoughts and prayers, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sands.
Quite a bit. We had a lot of information, it came out of the CVB, but I, I just have my soapbox I have to get on. I want to continue to push to yourgov, Y-O-U-R-G-O-V. I want to continue to push that, because folks are continuously trying to figure out how to report blight, lights out, potholes. You can do it so easy that it's actually better for you, it's better for the city, if you use the application, which is a free application, Y-O-U-R-G-O-V. Once you see it, it pinpoints location, you can take pictures, and it actually works now, I guess, without messing up the system, but you put a note in, you take a picture of whatever it is you're reporting, and I go back and check in a week later without having to check with anyone, and usually that deficiency or whatever has been corrected.
Not nearly enough people use it. We should be getting far more usage on that.
We gotta continue to push it. I pushed it to two groups, and I saw where our usage went up a couple, so I pushed it to two small groups, but people love it and they're downloading, not like Pokemon, but they're, they're at least downloading. And I'm really liking Pokemon for what I'm seeing. One lady had to walk ten kilometers, that was her next requirement, so it requires people to move. A young gentleman said, I gotta walk six kilometers before I do my next one. So it's more than a game, it's actually helping people to, to work out. I wanted to talk about the airport a little bit, because I, I got the email, we responded back to it, and I'm kind of glad, but the, the airport, we went down on as far as what we're allocating, and it's continuing to grow and expand. Talking to the pilots this year, and talking to the pilots last year, they were just so happy, they said, well, you know, if the weather provides, they want to continue to come back here, and the city did a great job of providing the community, not just those pilots, but we had a great event. And when I look at the CVB and we look at the states, we, we're concerned about heads and beds, and the people that visit our area, that month increased significantly, that month of May, so when we're looking at tax revenue and how we pay our bills, getting people here, getting folks in our hotels, and having them use our, our grocery stores, because a good portion of our revenue comes from grocery stores even. So that's a big success, and I want to continue to push that. I had a question about the bluffs with their, uh, with the loss of one building, how does that affect us and our revenue?
They're rebuilding.
I heard they're gonna tear down and not rebuild.
There is new rafters.
Okay. Because I'd heard at the-
Not new rafters?
No. That's to hold the walls together before they fall out, to determine-
Last I got from the insurance company, was the rebuilding, because I was worried about the insurance proceeds. It was a sixty-one, approximately sixty-one percent loss. We would not get the fifteen percent until they hit a seventy-five percent loss. They hold money in place, I had a good discussion with the, uh, adjuster on that one, and they're gonna hold money back anyhow when they make a settlement, in case they don't get the work done.
Okay.
But he told me they're building back. So those are not new rafters.
Right now, they have a structure up there to keep the walls from falling out.
Okay.
And so they can continue to do their due diligence, engineering, and all the things that they need to do, but that's just a temporary structure.
Okay. As far as I know, it's still in the game. I mean, that's the last I got from insurance, insurance company's been real good to work with.
So it shouldn't affect our budget in any way?
Shouldn't, not if they rebuild. If, if they don't rebuild, it'll affect it.
Because that's some of the concerns I had. Okay, um, one of the big things coming next year, there's a first planning meeting coming up here just in a couple weeks, June 10th of next year's Symphony in, in the Flint Hills. Uh, this is a four million dollar economic impact to an area. Big thing coming to the area, but there's a lot of work that goes with it. There's a big fundraiser where the community's got to, I say the community, but the Symphony Hills, Symphony and Flint Hills and us have to raise seven hundred thousand dollars, so however they go about it, I know there's support from the state, but that's, that's the number that they have to look at. And we're looking at the CVB as possibly a Redtail Hawk sponsor, which gets us in on some of the advertisement, and this thing touches thirty, I believe it's thirty-four states and six countries. So this is a big deal that's coming to our area, and it's gonna be on a ranch, and, uh, it's the Gary County Deerhorn Ranch. I don't know where that's located, but that's where the Symphony and the Flint Hills would be at. We had a big briefing on blue green algae, and by nationwide, it was, I think it was University of Nebraska did it. Anyway, they pinpointed where most of the algae came from, and they use nitrogen as the base, and, and there's two states that are pretty much, the big one that was a hotspot was Nebraska, and the second one was Kansas. Everything else was just kind of filtered out throughout, a little bit in Missouri, and maybe a little bit south of us. But we need to get some representation, and that briefing we got today, they're gonna share it with us, we'll share it out. But they took pictures, they took measurements, and, and Denmark, I believe it is, they have a card. Our enemies are not the KDAG. We gotta figure out who's telling folks that when we have a watch, they're not putting the watch out, they're going straight to a warning, which affects things. The media's covering everything except for clear. They're not supposed to cover anything, and Mike Selman was there this morning, he heard part of the discussion. They're not supposed to talk about watches, but the moment a watch goes up, they put it as a warning, and that just affects the people that come here. And we're talking about economic impact to our area, the people in Milford, the people in Wakefield, the people around the lake, and to include Gary County, that affects a lot of us. So that was a good brief, um, it's something we have to do a little bit more with. New teachers' brief, August 2nd, they're looking for people to help volunteer, plus we have the, uh, the Color Dash, your Float Your Boat, we're looking for volunteers, and that's all on the same day, plus a ribbon cutting of the Thunderbird Marina. So all of that's happening the same day, there's flyers out there for it, and I believe it's all, uh, I'll have to defer on that, I think someone else will probably have that. And Brett Michaels on the Facebook, this year Sundown Salute, we got over three thousand hits, which is like a major plus for the CVB Facebook site, that's how we can determine what's coming in, all the comments, uh, hotels, restaurants, everybody was super, super happy, because this is the, that was just a great time. We didn't have enough rooms in the area for Brett Michaels, so we're looking at a possibility to collude with some other element that has concerts regularly, and if we can get one of them to come here and tie it in with Sundown Salute, that's what we might talk with. Nothing's been done, it's something we gotta get started. Your honor, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good report.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Just a couple things, um, right now, the county fair is going on, so, um, you know, try to get out and enjoy it and check it out, I've been out there once already, and I know Thursday night's the big auction, so I guess of the livestock, and I went last year and I really had a good time, I didn't get a cow or anything, but you never know.
I can work that out for you.
Oh, no, I wouldn't have anywhere to put it, so.
You weren't bidding against the city manager. You weren't bidding against the city manager.
Oh, no.
Not bidding. He'll take bids on that.
This past Friday, out at Acorns, the Cove Restaurant had the ribbon cutting, and it was very nice if you, and I just think that that whole area out there, it's a, a nice gem, or it's good for our area. So, the Cove is very nice restaurant out there, and the whole, the whole place is just very nice. And when I was there, God, the place was packed. It was packed inside, it was packed on the patio, so you get a chance to check it out. This coming Friday, there's two things I would just like to mention that are going on. The first one's gonna be down at Heritage Park, and it's gonna, it's the twenty-two push-up thing for the veterans. It's July the twenty-second at seven P M., and, and it's for the suicide awareness. So, I know the Combat Vets Motorcycle Association that they're leading the charge on that, to come together with, you know, whoever wants to attend and just push out twenty-two push-ups. And at the end of that, the American Legion Post Forty-Five is having a reception at their place. So, something you can go out and help to support, it's to help bring awareness. And the other big thing that's going on this coming weekend is the Kansas Bay Ruth League, State Baseball Championship Tournament. So, that's gonna be Friday the twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, beginning Friday and Saturday. It's gonna be at North Park, and then Sunday and Monday, depending on how, I guess, the Brigade baseball team does, and they're supposed to finish up at Wraithert Stadium. But the opening ceremonies will be at seven-thirty up at the North Park Ball Field. So, that'll, you know, so to me, there's a lot going, going on in our community, and if you get out and experience and enjoy it, you really see that there, there really is a lot going on here. So, that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I attended the Flint Hills Regional Council last week, and pretty much the presentation was about tourism in the Flint Hills. I had a presenter from Emporia who is a sister to, oh, yeah, the Opera House, Joe's wife.
Yes.
Sheila Markley's sister. She introduced herself to me sitting there, we were sitting beside her at the table. But one of the things that she was talking about was the Flint Hills Barn Quilt Trail. I guess if you get on their site, you can get a list of the highways to run, roads to run, and go look at barn quilts. I don't know how many of them that Phyllis made, but...
A few. But I donate them.
It's something to, to get you started, driving through the Flint Hills to enjoy the Flint Hills. The next Flint Hills meeting is going to be out here at Acorn Resorts, August nineteenth, and that will be the annual retreat. That'll be a holiday affair. So, and Liv Well, we filed for another grant, and we were doing pretty good. We had secured two grants, but we just found out that we missed one. But I guess you don't get to win them all.
No.
Yeah. But we're still going, we're still doing the summer picnic parties, and due to the heat, the attendance has dwindled drastically. An inspector from Wichita was at our site last week, and he said that across the state of Kansas, everybody's been experiencing, experiencing, you know, the lack of participation due to the heat. But he said Junction City is still having a higher percentage than most of the other towns. So, we will keep working at it. That's all I had.
Good job. Thank you. Chief Bracy, the Police Night Out, when, when we do that, it's in Heritage Park, and everybody's invited, and that is typically done in May?
June.
June?
I believe it was done the June first this year?
Yeah, it was the same as the airport.
Yes.
June third.
And we were doing, it used to be called In Junction City National Night Out, and that was August first. And that's when the national day around the country was. But at a hundred degrees, we thought we'd move it to the end of May, first of June.
Okay. I, I, I see other communities throughout the United States that are doing like...
Similar.
Those things, like you did on June first. And I was just curious if there was any talk or if there was any movement to have another night out in light of the unrest across the United States. There's a lot of communities that are kinda doing these fairs, kinda doing these things. I, I didn't, I didn't know if there was any thought of doing one of those in the fall.
We haven't talked about it yet. I know we still, like, last Friday night, we had our movie in the park with our community involvement unit.
And you have two more scheduled, don't you?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they do one every couple of weeks.
You might have heard about the barbecue in Wichita over the weekend. Now, it started out as a Black Lives Matter said they were going to protest in the park. And once the chief heard it, he rallied around his people and says, "Let's have a barbecue." And it hit the national news, and it was a great thing to do. And yes, we are thinking about things like that. Some things that are going on in the community, I wish you could come down to the police department. Every day in the last week, we have many, many people coming in with cards, pizzas, donuts, cupcakes, cookies, and some of our, some of our regular vendors that charge us for supplies have come in and said, "This is on the house. We support you." And so, I know it's trying times for law enforcement. It's trying times in Kansas. We had our second officer killed within the last two months in Kansas City, Kansas. Captain Robert Melton was killed this afternoon, sitting in his car. And so, it's not often that we have an officer killed in Kansas, and we see the national news, and what's happening, you know, concerns us all. We're in a hiring process right now, and sometimes people say, "Why would anybody want to be a police officer in this time?" And there still is. We still want to go out and do a great job. We're going to be professional, and I can tell you, there is no racist on the Junction City Police Department. And if we were ever to find one, they'd be out the door as fast as we can get them out the door. And I'm proud of our guys. I know you are too, and I thank you for the support that you give us.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to, I wanted to say a thank you to the great efforts by the city manager and the assistant city manager and staff for working the budget and keeping it down. I've heard other governing bodies may be raising their mill levy because of the, because of the tax lid, and it's, it's not unique to our area. There's other places in the state. And, and I think it is our responsibility to be fiscally responsible and accountable, and, and this city staff does that. I appreciate the work that's been done on that. I would like to see less spending as we move forward, find ways of, of spending less as far as consolidation with supplies or offices, and, and I'm sure that that is done to, to an extent, but we need to look at, we need to look at everything, and, and I'm, I'm a big believer in, in the energy conservation. It doesn't take very much to turn a computer off, turn the lights off. Electricity's running all the time. People, people got things plugged in that should be unplugged. There should, there should be a policy, just as there is in other government agencies where when you leave, you turn everything off, and, and so you try and save as much as you can. And, and to keep the mill levy at one or less is, is to be commended. I, I appreciate the, the work of staff. I was at a brigade game here a couple nights ago, a few nights ago, last weekend, and I had a guy sitting next to me, and he, he made the comment, and I, I wanted to, I wanted to say, I wanted to tell people what somebody from outside, he said, "Well, you guys do an awful lot in this city. There is something going every day, whether it's ballgames, whether it's youth, whether it's whatever's going on. You have so much stuff going on, I don't know how you can even keep track of it." And I said, "Well, where are you from?" He said, "I'm from Hoysington." He said, "We don't do any of this stuff in Hoysington." I said, "Oh, really? So, so you, you know our city managers from Hoysington, don't you?" And he goes, "As a matter of fact, I do."
That's where he left.
And so, he said, "We never, we never did this stuff." And I said, "Well," you know, he's got a good commission behind him, and the commission pushes him pretty hard, so he, he does stay pretty active. I'll let you, after I tell Jim, August seventeenth, Float Your Boat.
Okay, good. Thank you. And Color Dash and Ribbon Cutting.
Yes, yes.
And my birthday.
Oh. Oh, and a birthday.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Sorry to butt in, but...
Yes.
The Junction City Brigade is in the finals of the Counting Cup.
Yes.
They play this Thursday night at Wraithert Stadium at seven o'clock.
One dollar.
One dollar to get in. That's it. Cheap.
And two dollars for setting beverages.
Yeah, and, and if they...
Beverages are only two dollars.
If they win and all, do they keep playing or don't they?
Yeah. The first game is home. If they, they win, the next game, it will be in the winner of Baldwin City and whoever. And then if they have to play a third game, then that's, it'll be Saturday night at Wraithert Stadium, seven o'clock.
Yeah, they come back.
Yep. It's a three-game series. First one win two, it's over. So, looking to bring the cup back to Junction.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Need to pack the house.
Pack the house.
A, a dollar to get into a quality ballgame? That's, that's pretty reasonable. I'm at the fair Thursday night.
You may have to, you may have to split your duties.
I have to auctioneer.
You'll be buying a hog.
Be buying a...
No, I'll be auctioneering, yeah.
Okay. With that, Mr. Dinkle, I'll let you redeem yourself.
The difference between another town you mentioned is about, a mill's worth about eight thousand dollars there. So, that makes a lot of difference in what you do too, so. Anyhow, yeah, Brigade Fair is going on, and yeah, I'll be involved with the fair on Thursday night, help with the four-hatch livestock or four-hatch sale, and, and be involved with that. It'll be fun with there. Health insurance problem last week, I think, went well. We had ten sessions, you know, with the change we make, and we'll see everything moves on, and I think it flowed real well. Commissioner Ryan talked about Liv Well, Gary County. Elks Club, kind of an accident. Elks Club, nobody knows this, has this neat little fundraiser they do a couple of times a year.
Four.
Four times a year, and they raised, what, three hundred? How many dollars?
Three hundred and thirty dollars for Liv Well.
For Liv Well. I went there because Christine Noraga had invited me to go, so I, well, and I went, had a great time. Their next fundraiser, September eleventh, they're gonna make, raise money for Elks charities. We didn't spend much money. Well, we came way ahead, but it was a fun event, and I think there's things like that that I think as ambassadors, we need to tell, I didn't know about it, and lifelong Elks member didn't know about it. And it's just a great event to raise some funds to stays in our community and makes things happen. You know, Liv Well was funded by Grant, and Christine was hired, and Christine's leaving in September. This community, as we're blessed so often by military wives, are very dynamic people that come in and make good for our community, and she, their P S, P C S?
P C S-ing.
P C S-ing in September, but she's left a mark on our community, and, and the work that Liv Well has started, I think, is a lot due to her leadership.
It's definitely due to her leadership.
I think you'll need to get on J C now.
Yeah.
We will.
Mac Breakfast is next Thursday, so a week from, so get your reservations if you want to do that. We had a brief discussion yesterday, some of the staff members, with the Daily Union. And we're still early, and they're talking about a banner project, like, to, for people, families to buy, purchase a banner, which would be hung downtown. We're still early in the game, you know, this. And the family would buy the banner, and we would hang it probably during the month of October into mid-November. The problem we have with, up to Veterans Day, is then you have to switch over into Christmas right away, into how that works out. Early discussion, but it's a way to honor veterans, and, and we'll continue that and let you know as we move on forward. But I think we had a very positive discussion with how we get, do that in there. What a project has not been bid yet, got a call from K D A G yet. Don's been working with K D A G back and forth on, right now, what it goes to, you may have to help me, Carrie, goes to the lagoons, the lime lagoons.
That's sludge from the lime softening process because...
Yes.
We can't water back off of it.
Then they want to make us go, don't bring it back to the plant. So, then somebody else from K D A G wanted to go into the, the sewer, the sewer plant, which is volume would kill us.
No way.
Yeah, would kill us over sewer plant. Then we had, then we moved, I mean, this is, Carrie knows about, better than idea. Then there was discussion, it goes to the river. Then, no, I think we're back after this morning, the phone call I got this morning, we're back to where we started.
Yeah.
But it's taken four months, probably, for Don to get there. And it's just the regulations we have to deal with, and, you know, we dealt with them, but we, we spent four months, basically, delaying the bid process, and we're back to where we were, what we do. Sewer project is moving slowly, more over there and come over here. I was not able to attend the update they Sean did on our behalf because I had another commitment I had to be at or phone call be on. Sewer backup issues, we had a couple, as you know, sent to the insurance company and be dealing with them. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Beatty?
Last week, we had our first meeting for our software system upgrades. That's gonna be very intensive. We had our first meeting last week, but we had two meetings this week, and they're four hours each of sitting and talking about chart of accounts. Next week, every day next week, staff will be meeting for four hours each day to work to set everything up and look for potential errors and problems of the conversion. August twenty-second through twenty-ninth is the first launch for the actual accounting software, and then we go to payroll on Halloween, on October thirty-first will be our launch for new conversion to payroll. And what's after that? Accounts receivable? Anyway. And then finally, the conversion for municipal court. So, between now and year end, please be patient with us, because you won't always get your reports exactly when you want them or need them, because we're going to be doing these conversions, and, and we will, you will see errors in the system that may look, things may look funny, and we'll work towards making any resolution or problems go away. The one thing that came out of today, though, is where our chart of accounts errors was only a thirty-five page report, and she said in most cities, it's a hundred-plus pages. So, that speaks well to Jolene Schnur's tight controls on how she does her chart of accounts and, and what we've done with trying to eliminate errors and keep everything tight. So, we were very pleased with the outcome of today, but we have a long road ahead of us, and, and we will give you updates on a regular basis, but so far, knock on wood, all is going fairly well. So, the conversion will be very intense, but we'll get through it. That's all I have to report.
Thanks. Ms. Saddles?
Nothing, sir.
Mrs. Logan?
I don't have anything to add.
Chief Bracy?
Counselor.
Chief Rook?
Good night, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Osborne?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Germain?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Yearout?
Thank you.
Mr. Lizier?
Nothing, sir. Commissioner Fitzgerald spoke on the baseball phone.
Great. Mr. Peterson?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. And I think that'll do it.
Want to adjourn? I can.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Aye.